I am called in this meeting of the Town of Silver City to order. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to all tonight. The only item on the agenda tonight is under New Business. Item 2A is the approval/disapproval of requests for proposal number 16/17-2P: Community Promotions. Mr. Brown, do you want to make some comments?
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to explain a little bit about lodger's tax. Lodger's tax is a tax that's authorized by the state of New Mexico through state law. It gives the local governments the authority to impose lodger's tax in addition to the required gross receipts taxes. The Town of Silver City adopted a local ordinance that imposed a 5% lodger's tax that the lodging establishments paid to the Town of Silver City. Lodger's tax can be used for tourist promotions, for police, fire, sanitary services, for tourist operation and maintenance of tourist-related facilities. And so the town has always put by far the largest amount of the largest tax that we receive out for promotions. And I do keep some back for the operation of the museum. That's about 18% of, it pays for about 18% of the museum's budget. And then I keep overtime funds for police and fire to be at the tourist events as well as for porta-potties and stuff like that. And I do keep a little bit more set aside for promotions for events that are starting up so that we can help them get started that aren't actually looking to, the new things. It's just infusion money so that they can get up and going to help them with advertising. So the promotional funds are awarded through this lodger, through the RFP process which we're going through right now. So with that, do you have any questions?
Any questions? Councilor Lehman-Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You might be going to speak about this in a moment, but how does the lodger's tax revenue of this year, past year, compare to previous years?
The, what we just finished this year, it was actually, it ended up only like 2% down from last year. But it's a little bit skewed because one of the lodging facilities hadn't paid in a few years. So they made one big lump sum this year. So it was, it increased the lodger's tax by, I believe, $15,000 or $18,000. So really, once you pull that out, we're down more like about 6%, 7%. And over the last two years, we're down close to 14%, 15%. And that's in contrast to what we've, the information we've been hearing from the visitor's center and about tourism increasing. I do believe it's increasing, but there's other things that are impacting lodger's tax collection. Not people coming in, but us being able to collect the lodger's tax because of those who are governed by the state law right now.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Brown?
One thing I did want to add, the, I think I've told you before that we received, the county and the city applied for funding from Freeport for a tourism coordinator. And the majority of the work for the tourism coordinator is going to gather information about the different events that are going on as far as tourism is concerned. And we're going to be requiring all of the, of those entities that receive lodger's tax funding in order to receive it, they are going to have to work with that coordinator to actually gather the information. And we want to have this information available for the lodger's tax advisory board as well as the town council next year, hopefully, and the county's boards and commission so that we are able to make better informed decisions. Because it's sort of hard for these entities, especially the small ones, to gather the information of how many people came, how long they stayed, what they, what might have made them, kept them to stay a few extra days, those types of things is what the coordinator is going to be working on. So I just wanted to let everybody know about that right away.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Well, first, again, I'd like to recognize the members of the lodger's tax advisory board. And the board is made up of five members, two from the lodging industry, two from industry in general, and then one general member from the public. First of all, I'd like to recognize the chairperson of the advisory board, Ms. Sandra Hicks. Would you stand, Sandra? And as I call your name, would you please stand? Michael Hellman.
Mitch.
Nancy Johnson, not here tonight. Michelle Carrillo. And Janie Katz. Ms. Hicks, would you like to make your presentation?
I don't think I'm on it.
Can we do it from the podium?
Oh, sure. I'm not sure what I'm supposed to present. I thought everything was going into executive session, so I wasn't prepared to present anything, but I'd be glad to.
You can do it.
I just didn't know what I'm supposed to say. I thought things had changed. But, whatever, we will, we will make it do. Okay, so what would you like to know? What, did I just read the different groups that applied and what we recommended and the comments that we made?
Yes.
Is that what you want?
Oh, okay, yeah.
Okay, you can do that, no problem. And the list is, I'm not quite sure, it's just the list, isn't in any kind of order at all. Gila River Festival requested $4,500. We recommended $3,000, that's what they got last year. We liked the way they presented their marketing materials on page seven and eight, which none of you people can see, but it was very clear what their marketing materials were. They were in a chart and what, where they went and things like that. It was very easy to, to read and to access. And we were also very impressed by the presenters and activities seemed to be a cut above what's happened in the past. So the Gila River Festival is moving, moving forward. We okay? Okay. Silver City Main Street Project is the next one. They received $10,000 last year, they requested $12,500, we recommended $8,700. And I want to say, I should have said in the beginning, that we have a lot less money to pass out this year. So there was a, was a 13% cut almost everywhere. We had to, we had to really cut people that we might not have if we had more money. We recommend that they move Taste of Downtown to another weekend. We feel it conflicts with one of the busiest weekends for the restaurants, but we like your stats from your website with the age demographics. Ford Bay Historic Preservation received $2,000 last year, they requested $2,000. And again, because of the lesser amount, we had to divvy up, it was $1,300 that we recommended for them. We did not have any comments. It's been around for a while and keeps doing what it's doing. The Blue Sky, they weren't here last year, they requested $76,248. We recommended zero. They haven't proven that they can do anything. We feel they should take their ideas for the art, to the arts and cultural district people, show us what you can do, and then you can put heads in the beds. We suggest that the applicant, this is a personal one, we suggest the applicant, Gogo Gorilla, not gorilla, G-U-E-R-I, not G-O-R-I-L-L, marketing. Because one of the things, you also wanted a lot of funding with no clear outcomes and you were dependent on other entities to provide the wherewithal. We didn't feel it was appropriate for lodger's tax overall. Silver City Arts Association, we got $8,000 last year, requested $8,000, and we get, we recommended $8,000. They have great brochures, they have good organization and presentation, they are just a superlative organization as far as we're concerned. Grand County Rolling Stones, received $3,500 last year, requested $4,000, and we gave them $3,000. As always, it's the quality presentation that they give us. And an event. Festival of the Written Word, which didn't get money last year because they're every other year, every third year, I forget, requested five, we, and we gave them three. Again, partly because of the decreased ability to fund things. Members of the Arts Council requested 35, received 35 last year, requested 24,9, and we gave them 24. We would like to see a shoulder season event, hope that they can keep the Chocolate Fantasia, we've heard there's some issues about that. We'd like to see the Print Fiesta move to a different weekend and make sure the lodger's tax is on all of its materials. There were a couple, at least one piece of advertising that didn't have lodger's tax mentioned on it. Tour of the Gila, received $30,000 last year, request, requested $50,000 this year, and we gave them $25,000, and we're just really excited about the Grand Fondo event, not Frondo, which, the Grand Fondo event, we think it's a great, a great thing to be encouraging. And the Silver City Arts and Cultural District received $131,500 last year, they requested $135,000 this year, and we gave them $104,000. We're putting the digital display ads, and this is my own personal little pet peeve, they, they were very proud of themselves for putting digital display ads in El Paso Airport, but every time I come through there, there's not a single Silver City brochure in the information booth that's right there. And I'd like to see our Silver City, and I've asked them, stopped and asked them, can you, will you take our Silver City? Sure, they've got Rudosa, they've got Las Cruces, they need to be putting Silver City there. If you're going to put a sign up, give them some information. So total requested was $322,548. We had $180,000 to give out, and that's what it all adds up to. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I want to thank the advisory board for what had to be a lot of really hard work and a lot of time that you spent going through these. And I also want to thank the council members for doing the same thing. It's not a, it's not a trivial thing, going through and looking for all of the individual items that the proposals are graded on. Would any presenters from each of the applicants like to make any comments? And what I'd like to do is I'd like to go in this order, and if you have a comment, just come up to the podium and identify yourself and the organization you represent. Councilor Conner?
Lauren, we have each group come up and speak so that we can ask questions. So we can, we usually have every group have a speaker so that we can ask them questions. Are we not doing that this year? You just said that they could if they wanted to, but we usually require it so we can ask questions.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Councilor Conner. So we'll first hear from the Gila River Festival organization.
Good afternoon, council. I'm Allison Cibic, Executive Director of the Gila Conservation Coalition. We put on the Gila River Festival, and you should all have these in your, in the applications, but September 21st to the 24th, Gathering the Gila is the theme this year. Thank you for your comment on, on our program this year. I think we have a great program. Winona Leduke is our keynote speaker this year. Top-notch speakers from around the state, all coming here to Silver City to talk about how native plants from the Gila watershed influence native foods and medicines throughout history. So it's a real cultural history emphasis this year. We'll still be doing birding and all the other natural history, field trips, kayaking, et cetera. I stand for questions, if you have any.
Okay, questions? Councilor Edison?
Thank you, Mayor. It's actually not a question, but more of a comment. I thought that what you did was excellent. I liked the presentation, I liked the new direction that you're going in and similar to what the advisory board had mentioned about everything. I just want to remind you, and this will be something that might happen throughout the night, don't forget to mention that the Town of Silver City is one of your marketing partners because you are receiving, you may receive funding from us. So I just, it's a little, that's my pet peeve, is when someone doesn't mention one of the organizations that's actually potentially providing money to you. So if you receive money in the past, we are one of your marketing partners because you are promoting us, so. But thank you for, for what you presented and the way you presented it. It's truly visible that there's an effort to promote Silver City, and I appreciate that. So thank you.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Councilor Lehman-Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So other folks will hear similar stuff from me tonight. One of the things I really appreciated is that you took a really good stab at tracking how hotel occupancy was as a result of your event, including some rooms that you had blocked, booked in various hotels downtown. I very much appreciate that because lodger's tax comes from lodging. And so one of the things that we want is to use our money wisely to create more lodging. So I will do this probably every time, but bear with me. So to create, so for every hundred dollars spent, there is a five-dollar lodger's tax that goes into the town's kitty for lodging tax, lodger's tax. That means to get a $3,000 award, which is what the advisory board has suggested for your organization, there would need to be $60,000 spent on lodging. And that translates to, on average, 600 nights somewhere, for saying that $100 would be a night. So the thing that I always think of as a previous businesswoman is, can you put that many heads in beds? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Thank you very much. Next, a representative from the Main Street Project.
Hi, everybody. My name's Patrick Hoskins, I'm the board president of the Silver City Main Street Project, and I'm ready for any questions.
Councilor Edison?
I guess my first question is, the committee recommends moving the Taste of Downtown to another weekend. How open would you be doing that in the future?
Um, I don't know, that's a good question. My, my initial response was I really want to put that question to the restaurateurs and get some feedback from them. As much as this is a fundraising event for Main Street, it is really also an event for driving, driving people into the restaurants. So if, you know, in their minds it's not working, sure, we can move it. I think, like I said, I just want to hear some, some feedback from the restaurants.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Councilor Edison?
Okay, I have a couple of questions, so bear with me. I get concerned when I see that there isn't a relationship between total cost, matching funds, and request, and that included in one of the promotions of downtown. Because it said that there were matching funds available of $250, but that wasn't taken off the request to the town. Because it seems that they're matching funds of cash is what is my understanding from the way it was written. So just remember that it has to total up to what the total cost of the event is. So that's, that's a slight concern. I think that the marketing plan could be a little bit more detailed, especially in terms of the partnerships, you don't really talk about the partnerships that you have. And I would like to see that, and of course, I think it's really great when someone thanks us, but we also need to make sure that you all include us as one of your marketing partners, and it's pretty stated pretty obviously that it's one of the marketing partners. One of the recommendations is to make sure that you name the sponsorships, not just use the example, which is sponsorship number one, sponsorship number two, that's one of the things that we talked about in the mandatory session, is we actually need to put a name to that, especially if you have grants and things like that. If you have multiple partnerships, I mean, multiple sponsorships that are from multiple individuals from $0 to $500, that can all be put together, but if it's a large amount, that would be nice to know. I am concerned about, there isn't sufficient detail for me to understand about the contract labor that you've listed in the downtown promotion, it's $200, that's coming from lodger's tax, we only allow certain types of contract labor to be used. And so can you provide detail on what that is?
I can sure try. And you're asking me that, like, right now?
Yes, I am.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
That's what this is all about, is so that we know that if we have to remove that, because it's not contract labor that we can pay for. So that's, that's under your appendix C where you have the different events. And overall, in terms of the budgeting for the different events, there wasn't very much information, it really just merely spoke to the lodger's tax money. It didn't really explain what, except for in like a few cases where that extra money was coming from. And I would, I would ask that in the future that you are a little bit more clarifying on, on where your funds are coming from, the different events. And then if you do know what that contract labor is, or at least you can tell, because it may be an item that we cannot, that we cannot reimburse. So if you can't do it now, I think it's something that we'll have to consider for the future, that if you can't re, you can't reimburse it because it's not allowable, then we can't reimburse that.
I totally understand. I don't want, I don't want to ask you guys to reimburse something that, that we're not allowed to do. I very much want to make sure that we're doing this by the rules here.
So I think all you have to do is really make your, to make everything a little bit more detailed, like, is it for the website? Is it for design, graphic design? What is it for? That's really what I'm asking you to do, okay? Is, because lots of other folks did that, you just have to be more explicit so that we know that it's something that, when, when the award is made, that you can, you can turn in money for that.
Right, so they don't come back to me and say, hey, Pat, we need $200 from you, because you said yes.
Yeah, because we will, no. He just won't, he just won't get it cleared. And I think the last, the last thing is just in mind, and I don't know if this happened with everyone else, but I don't have any examples of your advertising.
And you're referring to the advertising that we would be placing, or you were referring to examples of past ads?
Um, as it requests, the first of my information is examples of past advertising of how you
Okay, I'll make sure that we get those for you next time, and we get it done right.
Okay. I know it's your first time doing this, so thank you.
You're very welcome. Any other questions?
Any other questions or comments? Councilor Lehman-Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't want to delve too deeply into your operations, but can you just tell me whether or not these events are, the major coordinator mechanism is some sort of board-led coordinating committee, or your executive director doing the general management of these events?
Um, yes, I'm like, the, like, day-to-day kind of boots-on-the-ground organizational work for the events is driven by the executive director, yes.
Okay, right. That's, that's helpful, thank you.
I forgot one more.
Councilor Edison?
Excuse me, I have one more. Could you stop me on the Live from Silver City, what you all do with that? Because I know the town pays for the services for the Live from Silver City webcam.
Um, yeah, and we link, we have a link on our website to that page. I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, I guess I was under the impression that some of the services we were paying for was web, having the Live from Silver City, when I know that the town already covers that with the web services that we, we provide. I just, I wasn't clear?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. No, what it is, is it's not us requesting any kind of money to provide for that service as it is to provide ads on that page. It's not a page that Main Street runs.
Oh, so they're advertising for Main Street on the page?
Yes.
Somehow I completely missed that.
That's okay. You asked that question just a half second ago, I was like, but I don't run that website. So, yeah, I totally was not making either.
Thank you for the explanation. That helped a lot.
Yeah, wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions or comments? I did notice a couple of things. I know Councilor Edison mentioned that the, that she thought the marketing plan was not well-developed, and that was actually a comment we, that one of the council members made last year, if you remember. And also, there was a comment on, to be more detailed and include web analytics or statistics, how the money was made from heads and beds in terms of visitors. So I just want to point that out because we hope that the comments that the council makes will be considered whenever the proposals are developed for the following year. That's all I had.
Please, Mayor, I have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry, one more comment from Councilor Lehman-Schmidt.
So the advisory board has recommended $8,700 for Main Street. And that would translate to, let me get this down here, this would translate to $160,000 of hotel revenue, which would be 1,600 nights of heads and beds.
That's okay.
Any other comments? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
Next is the Ford Bay Historic Preservation.
Thank you for having us again this year.
Thank you for having us again this year. There, okay. First, thank you all for your aid in the past to help Fort Bear. And looking at the future as we move forward, things you know this summer have happened. We've had YCC, and AmeriCorps, and favorable reports from property control from Santa Fe to move forward, which is very encouraging. We have plans made for the fall with our birthday on August 18th and 19th. And in lieu of a Fort Bear Days in September, we're having an eight-week film festival on ranching and farming. Last year, there was a request that there was never anything dealing with ranching, until we grabbed it and said, we'll go with it. We have two ranchers that will be coming to speak at these events. So I entertain questions.
Councilwoman Edison?
Thank you, Mayor. All right. Sorry, I keep hitting the wrong button. So I'm gonna repeat what I've said before, is remember that when you're talking about your tourism partners, the town of Silver City, if you receive funding, is one of your tourism marketing partners, so, and promotion partners. So I would just like to make sure to ask everyone who's submitting to include that. A thanks is wonderful, but we also need to be recognized, because the lodger's tax is coming from folks who stay in Silver City lodger's tax. I think I would just say that there wasn't a total amount for the events on the main, on the Appendix A page. One of them was missing, because you don't use the exact form, so you kind of missed filling that in. We don't really know who the marketing partners are. We know a little bit about it. And I think, as I've mentioned before, I would love to be able to see your stats on your marketing, how effective it is, and there are ways to get at that. And there are folks that can help you, and definitely there are different people in the audience, different associations, that can help you get that information. I think that that would make it a more robust proposal. And just make sure you include the operating budget form for your entity. That was not in the list. And I would like to request that, we just really want the ads when you put them in here. We don't need the invoices and the checks to go along with. That's something that our town clerk deals with, and it's extraneous to the information that we're requesting. And the last thing is, I noticed that the town is providing assistance with the flyers. Please make sure that even on those flyers that you list, that they're paid in part by funding from the town of Silver City. The one flyer that was included didn't have any information or a logo on it.
This flyer was not paid for by the city?
No, that's not the one that's in here.
Oh, that was paid for by the Trail of the Mountain Series?
No, I'm talking about the flyer for... Well, I think I pulled the thing off. But there's a flyer for the videos that you're showing?
Okay. On what side is it paid for with the lodger's tax symbol?
Okay. I clearly missed it.
But it's not on both sides?
Well, that explains that I probably missed it and didn't see the backside of it. So that's all I really wanted to say, but thank you.
Okay. The other thing that Fort Bear does is that we have events on days that a lot of other people do not. Our museum is open on Mondays, whereas the Silver City museum is not open on Monday. So it's, we encourage the people to come, to stay over on Monday instead of going right home.
I think, does the council have any other questions? Like Councilwoman Lyman Smith?
Thank you. Every time I will comment. I want to say that I've seen a real growth of excitement about Fort Bear, and clearly you are just the person who continues to march along, and I want to acknowledge that. One of the things I want to echo what Councilwoman Edison says, and also to direct you to work with the entity that is going to be hired by the town to work with folks on tourism research, because that really is important. As you can guess from my beginnings, really hound about how, what that means, an award of, you know, even what is a small award of $1,300, still means that you need to have about $23,000 in hotel rooms. And so 230 were hotel rooms. Now, you're not hosting one event, so you have a variety of events that are hopefully bringing people into town. But it would be really good to be able to hook onto the actual impact of your events and your tourism events. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you very much. Blue Sky was not recommended to receive any funding, but you went through the effort of putting together a proposal. And if you were here and you'd like to address the council, I'll give you that opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilors, advisory board members, and town staff. My name is Luisa Jimenez. I am the proprietor of Blue Sky Strategic Group. We are a newcomer to the lodger's tax proposal process, and a latecomer in the process this year's fall. I guess the only thing I'd like to say is, I do think that, given that we know that many people come to Silver City looking to potentially relocate here, we know that that is a market that is already there waiting, right? So my only, my main point really in putting forward our proposal is because I think that that is, why not actually dedicate resources to going after a market that we know is already there and interested? You know, the bulk of the baby boomer generation right now is actively searching for places to retire in the United States, and places where they, you know, their retirement funds can't be as extended as far as possible. I think it's an important market to consider in our promotion and advertising campaigns that we do. So with that, and I also, just one last comment. When thinking of gorillas versus gorillas, I prefer gorillas, and frankly, have worked for some of them and enjoy them quite a lot. So thank you.
Thank you. Hang on just a minute. Ma'am? Hang on just a minute.
Sorry.
Any comments? Councilwoman Edison? Councilwoman Kano? Okay.
So I appreciate what you said about relocation, but I think as Councilwoman Lyman Smith has demonstrated, that the way the funding is acquired is through heads and beds. And unfortunately, the quote that you used in the first paragraph basically says and recommends that from CNN money, that they come and stay for two months, or a month. We don't get any lodger's tax money, which is explained in the attachment to the RFP about the lodger's tax, the way lodger's tax is generated. We don't get any money for stays of 30 days or more. So, please, okay. So I think that there's a place for this, but I think you have to kind of not necessarily put up foot that your priority is to promote retirement, because that's not what these lodger's tax funds are used for. They're specifically used to promote tourism, not retirement or relocation. So that's all I'm asking, is that when you redo everything, is that you make sure that you read the entire Lodger's Tax Act and understand how the money is generated and where the money comes from. Because that, you know, as Manager Brown stated, you know, we're down the past two years, 14% to 16% lodger's tax funds. So relocation, but that's something that, yes, you're correct, that the Silver City Grand County Chamber of Commerce does a lot of relocation packets, but that's not necessarily tourism. I understand what you're saying, but you have to kind of understand where we're coming from. It's not relocation, it's promotion of tourism that funds are used for. So, and one of the things that I think is really important to us, and Manager Brown had expressed, is that we try to provide as much money as possible for the promotion of tourism, for people coming and staying here, heads and beds. That's how we want the money to be used, actually on the advertising, actually on getting people to come and stay. And that's another thing to consider if you think about reapplying in the future for it, because that's where we want the money to go.
Okay, thank you. I guess, if I may, just thinking about my own process and relocating here from Chicago, you know, I first came to Silver City and put my head in a number of beds, a number of times, before I actually came and spent a significant amount of time here. So I think for many people, it is a process. So, you know, as we were putting the proposal together, we were specifically thinking about how you get people to Silver City, put their heads in beds, particularly during the shoulder season. So that was really sort of what we were thinking of, as opposed to specific event promotion. You know, it's a very targeted advertising campaign, going after people who are considering relocation, and getting them here, and getting their heads in beds, you know, throughout their relocation, you know, process.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I could, I just want to reemphasize that the word relocation means something else when you're talking about lodger's tax dollars. And I think that the message didn't come quite across maybe the way you intended. It came all about relocation, that process, period. And as Mr. Brown has stated, with this 14% to 60% drop over the last two years, we don't get money from every single establishment. There's, you know, we don't get money, lodger's tax money, from certain staff in certain places. So folks can come and stay here, but that head in that bed doesn't count towards lodger's tax funds. So I just want to make sure that you're thinking about the bigger picture, because I have to say, every time I hear relocation, my brain turns off. It's about promotion of tourism, period. If relocation comes, great. But it's promotion of tourism first, with lodger's tax money.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other comments? Councilwoman Lyman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Jimenez, I think that there are two big markets that we have been missing that really are tourism markets. One are folks who are probably looking to, in a few years, maybe move to a different town, five, 10 years, and want to go and visit a number of times before they make any decisions. I remember my dear friend Annie Lessin, after she had lived in Silver City about seven years, told me she was still a tourist, but she had bought a house here by that time. And that was what really made me think, you know, there are a lot of folks. Larry, my late spouse and I came to Silver City probably five times before we bought a house. So that, we were tourists, and we were staying downtown in hotels. The second one that's really missing is the international market. And that is, I think that there are probably lots of folks from Europe who would love to come and visit and spend a couple of weeks in a place like Silver City. And we really haven't figured out any way to target those folks yet. So I'm going to acknowledge that your proposal, though this year it did not succeed, was really thinking beyond into markets that we had not yet tapped into. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Any other comments or questions? Well, I think you could be applauded for trying to get into the process and for some of the ideas that you had. And I thank you for that. And I suggest that maybe you meet with the chairperson of the advisory board to maybe pick up a few more ideas from her. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I think you'd like to do that. Chairman Hicks, or Chairwoman? Thanks very much.
Next is the Silver City Art Association.
We're all here. We come as a group because we do everything as a group. I'm here just as the co-chair, but I will say that our lodger's tax proposal is created primarily by these two amazing people next to me, Lois Duffy and Julie Enos. And I would like to give them the opportunity to say a few things to you.
Please identify them.
Hi, sorry. I just, since I know everybody in here, I think everybody knows me. I am Rebecca Martin, co-chair of the Silver City Art Association. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Julie Enos, and I was a former tourism director here in Silver City, so I recognize some of you. First of all, I want to say thank you so much. I've been working with the SCAA for a couple of years and have written the last two grant proposals, along with Lois. And we are a completely volunteer-driven organization. We don't, nobody receives any money. So we do this because we love the organization, and we're all artists, and we just, we thank you so much for believing in us, and we just really, really appreciate your support. And I'm going to let Lois talk a little bit more. She's been involved with the organization for a few years.
Lois Duffy, I have a gallery downtown on Texas Street, and I've been here for 20 years. I'd like to emphasize the fact that we put out this art guide every year, and actually the bulk of the money we receive from the board, it goes towards this. Then, actually, it's a little under $5,000. And then any remaining amount we get, we apply towards advertising our events, which I guess you all know about our red dot events, which we have in the fall in October. And also, Julie has now added a fashion show. Do you want to say it if you...
Well, we hope you'll come to our couture and fashion show. It's the first week in October. And we've also added some social media aspects this year, too, that we're really excited about.
So if you have any questions?
Councilwoman Kano?
I have one comment. This is outstanding. Yet again, second year in a row, your presentation was impeccable. The grammar was great, the setup, everything. So for those people that have some problems with some of their proposal stuff, I would suggest meeting with Ms. Enos and Ms. Duffy and Ms. Martin, because they really do an exciting job with their proposal.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Edison.
So I agree with Councilwoman Kano. I'd like to see a few more stats. I know that you're doing Facebook and other things now, and I think that some of the things that you're doing, you can actually get those insights from Facebook when you go to the particular post. So including a couple more of those things, a little more information about who's coming, who's staying, would be great. But I would say, just remember, town of Silver City is one of your marketing partners. Okay? I'm going to make that comment probably throughout the evening, so just a reminder. Okay? Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Councilwoman Lyman Smith?
I thought it's my fiduciary duty to speak. I agree with Councilwoman Kano that this was a wonderful proposal, very beautifully put together. And I always, always liked that booklet, I guess, what would you call that?
Well, it's called an art guide.
An art guide. I think the art guide is really beautiful. I do want to remind you that Mr. Brown is going to have a tourism researcher available to work. I know that the events are which, that, you know, he or she is going to be focusing on, but you are providing more than the events, because you have this art guide that I believe is in tourist, visitor centers everywhere in the state, right?
Yes, it is.
And so that is a wider reach than often we have with some of the other materials that are put out there. But I do want to remind you that the advisory board has recommended that you be awarded $8,000. And $8,000 translates to $160,000 in hotel room revenue for 1,600 nights. That's a lot of nights, heads and beds. So keep that in your mind.
I'd be anxious to work with the new hire with the city to see how we can track those statistics.
Yes, so contract for a year with a professional person who does, or group that does research. So I'm looking forward to that myself. Thank you.
statistics.
Yeah, so contract for a year with a professional person who does, or group that does research. So I'm looking forward to that myself. Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
If I need a break.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Edison?
I have a short break.
Do you have a motion for a short break? Is that a second?
Mr. Mayor, a second motion.
I want to favor say aye.
Aye.
We'll take a very short break, probably 10 minutes max. Coming out, me and Dr. Water, please. Next up is the Grant County Rolling Stones.
My name's Janine Weiner with Grant County Rolling Stones Gem and Mineral Society. We hold a three-day event over Labor Day weekend. It's a gem and mineral show. We really appreciate all of the support that you've given us in the past years, and hope that we get continued support. We're constantly trying to figure out new ways to get people into Silver City, to put heads in beds, and also to promote gems and minerals and geology and our club as a whole. I've been at this for, this is my second year, so any kind of recommendations are appreciated. And also, we are looking forward to working with the person, yeah, to do the statistics, because we have really been having a hard time with that one. But I'm open to, any questions?
Councilwoman Edison?
Great presentation, Mr. Mayor. Really well done. I just have to say, your budgets were clear today. Thank you. You did a great job. And I'm going to do my, don't forget, we're Town of Silver City is one of your marketing partners. I'm just going to put that hat on, so, but no, you guys just did. I have to say that this, you can see clearly how you've taken what you've learned and increased exponentially in what you're presenting, and thank you. Thank you for the great response.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Weiner, on your appendix B, I believe it is, you've added together hotel rooms over the Labor Day weekend. Do you know if those rooms were specifically related to the Rolling Stones event?
No, it's not. They could not. If we had information, it's the best that I could do.
Because Labor Day weekend, there were also two other events in town that day.
Exactly. I understand that. It's, that's all, it's the only information I could get.
So what they gave you were the number of rooms that they had actually rented out over those days?
Yes.
Okay.
I was trying to get them to specify, but I don't know how to do it. So that's why I'm looking forward to this new set.
So the tourism researcher will be very helpful in figuring out that with you.
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your patience. So just because this is my role tonight, I do want to say that the Lodger's Tax Advisory Committee has recommended that you, your organization be awarded $3,000. And $3,000 represents $60,000 in hotel revenues today. And that would translate to 600 hotel room nights. So on your appendix B, it showed that over the, from those hotels, which was a sub portion of the ones that we have in town, that actually from those six, seven hotels, there were a total of 780 rooms for those three nights.
Well, hopefully, they were all for us.
So that's your hope. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Well, you're doing a nice job, and we're not taking it for granted. Thank you.
Thank you. I hope to see all of them.
Everybody clap that. Next, we have the Festival of the Written Word.
Good evening. I'm Mary Hotfit. I'm one of the co-chairs of the Southwest Festival of the Written Word, SWIFL. And I'd like to thank the Lodger's Tax Committee, Board, first of all, for considering us, and also for the Town Council, and my esteemed co-chair, Jeanne Miller, is here, and our project manager, Paul Hotfit, who is a distant relative of mine. In answer to your question, Ms. Hicks, we are a biennial event. We have a major festival every two years, and our festival this, will be this year on September 29th to October 1st. And what we try to do is we try to do prologue events in the in-between years of the festival, where we focus a lot on writers' workshops, special events in the community, and we try to focus especially on that first weekend in October, so that becomes our spot. The other thing I'd like to say is that this year, we designed the festival on purpose to focus in our advertising on what we see in our statistics as our out-of-town and out-of-state markets that have produced people coming into Silver City before for the festival. And we also designed the festival to have more meals served downtown, more shops visited, et cetera, rather than our providing those services within the context of the festival. And we try to make a lot do with a little bit of money to run this festival. I will say that. We try to make every dollar count twice. In relation to that, also, I want to say before, Councilor Edison has to remind us that we do mention the lodger's tax in all our publications, and we also display the logo of the Town of Silver City, and we mention lodger's tax in Silver City on our radio ads as well. And I stand for questions.
Councilwoman Edison?
So, would I remind everybody, I mean, for the proposal response, make sure you include us as one of your marketing partners?
We have, and we would.
Well, I mean, list us, is what I'm asking. You list everybody else, just make sure you list us as one of your marketers. Not necessarily, I'm not talking about the advertising, that's clearly, you're very good at doing that, so that, it's more about the response and the proposal, your response to the proposal. And the only thing I would ask is if you could be a little more clear about actually how you use the lodger's tax funds, because I couldn't understand that.
All, no, thank you for asking that. Actually, the way we have earmarked, any money we would receive from lodger's tax will go to our advertising budget. We see that that is clearly what the tax is designed for and how we use it. That would be radio in our key markets, as well as print.
And just in the future, if you could, in the budget, make sure that you separate out the lodger's tax money and show exactly how it's being used. That would be great.
Good point. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilwoman Edison?
I look forward to attending the Festival of the Written Word, as I have every time it has been in town. Thank you. And I noticed that you have, in part of your narrative, you said at the last festival, of the 600 attendees, 100 stayed at local inns and hotels. And you had also presenters booking a downtown hotel. And I was glad that you captured that. You would allow me to say that you, you know, that your attendees filled up various hotels with guests from 38 to 400. So I, I don't know that they filled up all those hotels, but it's.
I don't think they filled them all up either, Councilor. I wish that they had.
I wish that they had.
I wish that they had. I think what we are beginning to see is consistency in our numbers between one festival or another, with a slight growth in between. But what we did do in this last festival is we saw 10% out-of-state, out-of-town attendance record, and we want to build on that.
Right, because what, you know, people who come from out-of-state are definitely going to stay overnight. Yes, we want that. So it is just part of my duty tonight, as the counselor, to note that the advisory board has recommended a $3,000 award, and a $3,000 award translates to $60,000 in hotel revenue. And at an average rate of $100 a night, that would be 600 nights. So if the festival is two nights, that means that you need to push 300 people into local hotels.
Got it.
Got it. All right.
Any other comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Members Regional Arts Council.
Good evening. Kevin Lankner, I'm the executive director of the Members Regional Arts Council. I'm here for questions.
Councilwoman Conno?
I actually have three things. Okay, the first one is, I know the last two years at least, I'm going to peg you down on this.
Sure.
You don't need to give us some, follow this pic. We asked for him this pic, because two of us are disabled, and it's very hard for us to carry them. So because you didn't give us very much information, we didn't need this. So if you could please not do that again, I would appreciate it. I actually would like to know why it was that the application was handwritten. That really is not very acceptable, either we've gone over that the past two years in the meeting, because we have received them in the past, and sometimes they're not legible. So could you explain to me why it's handwritten?
Sure. Well, I apologize for handwriting it. It is a challenge for us, as we are doing one of the big events right before this is due. We have half the staff that we had in the past, and we're just trying to do our best.
Okay, I'm not going to take that as an excuse, because you knew this was due in May, you could have started in February, you could have filled this out anytime before that. So that's something else I would like to see changed in the, in the future. And my other, my question actually is, the committee is asking if you, if they would like to see the Fiesta moved to a different weekend, so I'd like to know your take on that, and if that's something that you'd want to consider.
I think we can consider it. I think it's important that we get some feedback from a lot of other outside resources. The festival or Fiesta has chosen that weekend because it was replacing an event that we used to do previously. So when that date was chosen, it was replacing an event that was already happened.
Fiesta's on Labor Day weekend, correct? Picomania was the weekend after Labor Day.
It's been on a couple of different weekends, yeah.
Not recently, because it's kind of music festivals at that time.
Sure.
Anything else? Yeah. Councilwoman Edison?
So I have a few questions, really surrounding the differing amounts that are talked about for the print Fiesta.
Okay.
Because in handwritten Appendix A, you said, you say that the total cost of events is $27,750. The amount you're requesting is $10,250, and the amount of matching funds is $24,000. If you have $24,000 in matching funds, matching cash funds, why would you even need to come to the council for money, for $10,500?
That might be a mistake.
Well, it also doesn't match with what you've put on your Appendix C, and I can probably see where the problem is. In Appendix C, under matching funds cash, I mean, this is, the question is, is you was $24,000 as matching funds for the print Fiesta, under matching funds cash, and then you have lodger's tax for $10,250, but you carried that over into the matching funds cash line. So I, even with that amount removed, there's still a question about why the total expense is $25,000, yet you have roughly, what, under $14,000 to work with in matching cash. So why is there a request to come to the council for $10,000?
I'll just have to look at that now after a little bit better. I'm not good on the spot, but.
Well, I just, I just want to mention that there's a considerable amount of matching cash funds that don't really, the concern is, is that the funding that the lodger's tax advisory board recommends, and that really, that the, you know, the council would, has to approve, is it's actually being used not to increase the coffers of the arts council, because this is what it looks like right now, but it's actually being used for advertising. And so right now, the way you present the budget, it just looks like that's an overwhelming amount of money that, that I don't really understand how it's being used, and when you have all this other money. I don't know why it's being asked for that money. So there's a big question mark there.
Sure, and it's certainly not being used to increase our coffers. I mean, it's a reimbursement that we're working through, so we don't get reimbursed unless we have that expense. So that's, you know, kind of what we're working with.
Okay, and I understand that, and there's some money that was left on the table this year. But I guess the question is, is still, that's the one hangup I have with this proposal, is I don't understand how the money is being acquired or being used for the Southwest Fiesta, because there's too much, none of it makes sense to me, and none of it is compares across when you add things up, so.
Okay.
And it could simply be just a mistake in writing something out really fast, or doing something, but at the same time, you know, those are the sorts of questions I'm going to ask you.
Sure.
And the last thing, just remember to, on anything, and when you do your proposals, to remember that Town of Silver City, there's a marketing partner with, yeah. So I'm just doing my little song and dance on that, so. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Councilwoman Edison?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Members Regional Arts Council does a number of events throughout the year, the Big Blues Festival, the Print Fiesta, and hopefully, the Chocolate Fantasia. We're hoping that, where you're going to be able to do that again this year, as well as various venues of performance arts. And so I know that there's a lot of juggling of various events going on. And more than maybe any other, well, there's one other organization I'm going to really encourage to work with, the new Tourism Coordinator, but I really, really, really want to struggling, encourage you to work with them. In the past, you've provided some survey data and some hotel data, and that's really appreciated, because, here it comes. The advisory board has recommended $24,000 be given to the Members Regional Arts Council for a lot of work that you guys do. However, it is my fiduciary duty to let you know that that relates to $480,000 in hotel revenue, almost half a million dollars in hotel revenue. So that would mean 4,800 hotel nights. It's a lot. So if you think about filling up all the hotels for all those events, and maybe filling up hotels on times between events, we might get close to the 4,800 rooms for the return on investment.
Any other comments? Councilwoman Gray?
Thank you for doing all this stuff, and I know that you're shorthanded, and it's rough, and we only have a couple of people. Please hang in there. Please hang in there, and we'll support you. Thank you.
I want to thank you, too, for all that y'all do. The Chocolate Fantasia was really fantastic this year.
Talked to your state senators, and hopefully, we can make it happen again.
Thank you. Tour of the Hila.
My name is Jack Brennan. I'm the race director for Tour of the Hila, and I'm ready for your questions.
Councilwoman Edison?
Thank you for listening. The Town of Silver City is one of your marketing partners. I really appreciate that. Right there, up there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good catch there. I have to say, I'm pretty excited about the way you developed this, this year, the Grand Fondo, everything. It just, I mean, it just seems that your marketing plan's been really well put together, and I just want to stake out publicly that. I appreciate that. Let's see. I would ask that you split out your events on the Appendix A cover sheet, so we can kind of track them a little bit better. On the Appendix A cover sheet, split them out, the Grand Fondo from the Tour of the Hila, because what we have on here is we've got amount requested, you have the total cost of the event, amount requested. of the event, amount requested, and the amount of matching funds, but it doesn't add up to the total cost of the event, or events. So if you add the matching funds with the amount requested, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't come to the 361,250.
Correct, it doesn't.
Yeah, so just kind of watch that, make sure, I mean, I kind of figured it out after I got into it, but just make sure that it's on your cover sheet where we can understand.
I guess we didn't understand what matching funds really means.
Well, matching cash funds and things like that, so I, I mean, you can put that sort of information in there, but matching funds is, these are cash, these are, but you don't necessarily count volunteer hours into matching funds.
Okay.
It's just something that we know that you do, they're matching funds, but they're not dollar figure that goes into the total cost of the event usually.
Okay.
So I did look at the budget stuff, so that, that made, just, just try to split it out, but I just want to say that I really think that the Grand Fondo's going to be great. I think that the way you're going to be marketing it, what you're going to do, it really shows that the, after, how many years, the Tour of the Hila, 31, 32?
And we've done 31 years.
31. Yeah, it's going to be, it's going to attract a different set of people in some respects? Well, not sure, but that's Grand Fondo, you're going after non-professional.
The riders, correct, yes.
Yeah, non-pro, and I like that.
Well, the Tour of the Hila itself is an amateur race plus a pro race.
But I like the fact that you're going out and doing that, that you're actively going out and trying to get those folks that will stay in hotels, that will enjoy the nightlife, that will do that.
Right, right.
And, and I think it shows the sophistication in your marketing that you've moved that way, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Condon?
No, I know you say no.
Yes, 400, or 4,000.
Actually, I want to tell you a little bit more than that. Actually, first of all, I acknowledge that you, I see the enhanced plan for the Grand Fondo as being a direct response to the work on bicycle tourism, outdoor recreational tourism, that is, I think, important for our area. Our area is culturally attractive, historically attractive, but many, many people come here for the outdoor recreation. And of course, hiking is big time important, but bicycling can become more important. Now, I was pretty intimately involved in the Grand Fondo. I didn't ride, but I was there for parties and stuff like that this year, and I, if the plan that you've put together is actually executed, I would be really excited to see a lot more people coming. And one of the things I have to really recommend is better swag. I see in the hair that you have better swag.
Better swag, yes.
Better swag would make it really important. That said, the Advisory Board has recommended that you be awarded $25,000.
Thank you.
And that relates to accrue half a million in hotel revenue.
Okay.
$500,000 in hotel revenue. So of course, this is for both the Tour of the Hila and the Grand Fondo. We know, because of the way that the Tour of the Hila has been structured, that there's actually not as big of a hotel occupancy as I would like to see, and you would like to see. But you have a real opportunity with the Grand Fondo.
Let me just add, our approach for the Tour of the Hila is, again, going after the amateur racers.
Which I appreciate.
We're not, we're not, none of our marketing dollars will go after the professional teams. It's all amateurs, and it's amateurs within a 500-mile radius of Silver City. And our primary markets will be Tucson, Phoenix, Southern California, Colorado, Albuquerque, you know, Colorado up to Boulder, Denver, El Paso, Austin. Those are our markets, and we really want to go after the amateurs. That's, you know, we, that's our dedication for, for this year, is amateurs, you know, the thing with, with cycling, cycling days, cycling licenses in the United States has gone down in the last couple of years, so it's, it's, it's a real struggle, and we were down this year on amateur racers who came to Silver City. And we needed to get our, just do a better job, and I think our marketing plan will do this, to get our face in front of the amateurs in our, in this 500-mile radius, that we have this incredible event, and we'll encourage them to come here with themselves or families.
We are in one accord on that pitch and that vote. So accrue half a million in hotel revenue.
Okay.
Which means 5,000 hotel nights.
I was off, thank you.
Okay?
Got it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Last, and I'm pleased, the Silver City Arts and Cultural District.
Hi, good evening. I'm Kelly Kittington. I'm the Executive Director of the Silver City Arts and Cultural District. I want to thank the Towne Sub City for previous awards, as well as the hard work the Lodger's Tax Advisory Committee does, as well as the Council. I feel like I'm slightly too short. There we go. We do our best to market this town, and I feel like we are receptive to feedback we receive, and we want to continue to be receptive and work well with any constructive criticism and feedback that we receive. We are trying our best to market Silver City as quickly as possible, and of course, we face some challenges like that, so we want to continue to try our best moving forward.
Questions, comments?
Like?
Councilor Condon?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. The past couple times you've come to the council meeting, we've discussed diversity and the lack thereof. At your last, the last time you came to visit the Council, you told us that that was going to change. However, I received countless messages and phone calls, even from other states, after Fourth of July. Your post on Facebook had 10 pictures. In those 10 pictures, there was exactly one Hispanic person dressed as Uncle Sam. That doesn't count if you've got a beard on and you don't know he's Hispanic. Okay? It really bothers me that you came and you told us specifically that you were going to change that, and then the very next holiday, we have the same problem again. I am very offended by that. Also, I'm going to look at your ad, this is going to be the one that gets me this year, because, let me tell you, the ones with the Diablo de los Martos, the Anglo's dress of the Diablo de los Martos, that is still going to be one of my buttons, because I noticed that you're still posting pictures on your page that are the same. You have two different ones, you have one with a woman carrying a child dressed that way, and then you have the one that you used in this, this presentation, both of them. Again, cultural appropriation. If you do not include the culture that is celebrating the event, that is their culture, it's cultural appropriation and it's not appreciated. This one, clearly you do not have anyone Hispanic working for you. Anyone who knows anything about mariachi knows how offensive this picture is. Mariachi is a very, very serious tradition. A real professional mariachi would not behave this way. To show that, shows anybody who listens to mariachi, don't go to Silver City, because they don't take it seriously. Also, this community has 48% Hispanic. The only thing you have on your webpage is Hispanic people dressed in Balaflo Cortico outfits and trajes for mariachi. I'm a Hispanic person. I don't wear Balaflo Cortico outfits. That's not what I look like. Mr. Brown doesn't wear traje to work. I would like to eventually see you show it, that there are actually Hispanic people in this town, because right now, it looks like some fancy pants, traje on the outfit, where you celebrate Mexican culture, but you don't actually have the deal with Mexicans, and that's not appreciated. Lastly, this little presentation you've done, there's four different versions of it. There's one in here that says, "By afternoon, you'll understand why some of us never leave, and by evening, you'll know all of the town characters, the unofficial mayors, the sociable donors, and the lifelong natives." Excuse me, as a lifelong native, I'm offended by that. I'm not a town character. I am a town councillor. I'm a leader in this community, as is another lifelong member of this community. So when you post me right things like that, it's offensive to people, and it's offensive to people in other states too, because like I said, I think you have complaints about it. I'm thankful the committee has decided to cut your, your awards for this year, because if not, I would be asking for that too, because to me, that's the only way you're going to understand. Things need to change. It is not appropriate to act like there are not Hispanic people in this community. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Councilor Betterson?
I want to thank the Arts and Culture District for stating upfront that the Towne Sub City is one of their marketing partners. So thank you very much for including us in the list of marketing partners. We appreciate it. There are two of you that did, and you're one of them, so thanks. The one question I have for you, actually, I just want to say, I like the narrative, I like this multi-day pre-built Silver City travel itinerary that you're mentioning. I'd love to see a little bit more about it, I'm looking forward to seeing a little bit more about that, because I think that that will bring in people to stay longer, as, as you propose, that will, you know, add on days. So I'm, I'm very excited about that, that opportunity. And one thing I was wondering was, have you, because I didn't think it was necessarily completely addressed, but have you considered what sort of strategies you might need to take because of this significant drop in lodger tax we've had over the last few years? What things you might want to change? Is that where the built-in itineraries came in, to pay and things like that? No, that's okay.
Yeah, that's exactly where it came in, to encourage over next days, and we felt that if we gave people a plan, then it would use language that would, that's flowery and well-encouraged them to get excited about Silver City, that they would want to spend multiple days.
Well, thanks. Thank you for your presentation, for your proposal, and thanks again for listing us as one of your marketing partners. All right?
Any other comments? Councilor Emmett Smith?
Thank you. Kelly, I know that your organization doesn't do an event. You do all kinds of stuff, so it's kind of harder than to say what is the thing that you're doing that's really paying off. But I, I know that you're really interested in that, and I want to, you know, support that in all kinds of ways. It's one of the reasons why Mr. Brown is really working to have a tourism researcher, who I hope will be spending a lot of time with you guys, working together. I think that that's something that you would love to learn about, and it will really benefit us all. I noticed, a very small thing, that you said that you were going to be upgrading the billboards this year.
Yes.
I'm very excited about that, because whenever I drive, you know, back and forth from Albuquerque, I can't help but look at them, and I would like to see them be more effective and really reflect, "Come on out and stay in Silver City." So looking forward to that. Are you ready? So the, the Advisory Board has recommended that the Arts and Culture District, which is our main promotions and marketing here, be awarded $104,000, which is less than before, but then our overall lodger tax are, are less than before, and we all need to work on that. I'm promising you, I will work on that. But I do need to let you know that an award of $104,000 translates roughly to about $2 million in hotel revenue. So it'd be 20,000 hotel nights. So that's a big challenge. We know that we must have gotten them from somewhere, because we do have a lodger tax money to expend on. So let's just make every dollar count.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I add something? I wanted to say that we are continuing to work on it. We would appreciate the collaboration with the Towne Council and everyone, because it is an issue that we really do care about, and I've talked to, obviously, as you know, our photographer, to try to get more photography, so it's something that we are continuing to strive for, and we want you to know that.
Councilor Condon?
I talked her down to the bus, she wouldn't even care for Fourth of July. Excuse me, Cass.
I'm not, I just wanted to say that it's something that is on our mind and we're continuing to work on.
Any other comments from the Council? And thank you for your presentation, and I want to thank the Arts and Culture District for the things they are doing, and last year, one of the comments or suggestions made was that many of your ads were more outdoor oriented, and when I was looking through your proposal, I saw a lot more mix with in-town activities, and so thank you for addressing that. Any other comments, questions? Thank you very much. Okay, this concludes all the presentations. Do I hear a motion?
Okay. Is Mr. Rex Cameron, Mr. Brown?
Mr. Brown, do you want to make any comments? Councilor Betterson?
I just closed my thing. Let me have the, this thing, no, that one. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the community proposal number 16/17-2P for promotions per the Lodger Tax Advisory Board recommendations.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, one sec. Please. I'm going to ask back now.
Is there a motion on a second? Is there any, any discussion?
I think we've discussed.
Are there any comments from the general public? Rule call, please, Ann.
Councilor Betterson?
Aye.
Councilor Ava Smith?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Condon?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. And in closing, I just want to thank all of the organizations that were present here tonight, and for all of the great work that you do. We have, again, one of the things that makes Silver City such a great place to be is all of the volunteers. Thousands and thousands of volunteer hours make many of these events possible, and I, and I'm sure the Council wants to express our appreciation to all of those in Silver City who helped to make Silver City a great place to be. I would like to remind everybody that during the month of July, we are taking applications for the Welcome to Silver City sign. You can submit your designs, there's, if you go to the town website, you'll see the process that is being used. We really need input so that the Council can make an informed decision. Council Betterson?
I have one question, Mr. Mayor. Do we need to direct the town staff, the town manager, to continue doing the RFP and the addendum to the RFP, as has been ordered this year, to continue with the meeting, the mandatory meeting and everything? Do we need to do that, or is it just something that you require, that we do that direction, or can we just say everything is the same? Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. This concludes the business of the Town of Silver City. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Emmett Smith? Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, a second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.